Call the meeting to order, we have the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have the roll call please.
Ms. Thamba?
Here.
Mr. Seaworth?
Here.
Mr. Sowers?
Here.
Mr. Good?
Yes, here.
Ms. Dixon?
Here.
Mr. Schaefer?
Here.
And Mr. Huffman?
Here.
Okay, in adopting our agenda, we need to delete item 7C, special use permit application for 50 West Main Street. The applicant has asked for that to be withdrawn. And we also need to add number 8C, which is the fiscal year 2324 capital improvements program.
It's already on there. 8C?
Oh, okay.
There's two seats.
Yeah, okay.
Ah, okay.
Okay. We are...
Late edition, I apologize.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
He's keeping you on your toes.
Should we have a motion to adopt the agenda with those, well, the ones already added with the deletion?
So moved.
Second. On favor? Okay, we have the minutes from April the 12th. Any additions or corrections to the minutes? Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve the minutes as presented. As second.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we don't have anybody signed up for the citizen comment period. So we move into the public hearings. The first one... The first one, special use permit, number 2310, located at 8 Frye Lane. This is for a special use permit to install a manufactured home at 8 Frye Lane. Tax map number 42A3A49. This is in the R3 High Density Residential District. It is permitted in the town code 42, or 402.3E. And that is with a special use permit. And the application is from Rexford Eugene Frye. We have the requirements there in section 402.3. Basically, that it's on a permanent foundation. Does require a special use permit by the planning commission, agreed by the town council. The axles, wheels, and tow bar or hitch must be removed. The roof has to be of shingles or other materials normally used for conventional dwelling roofing. The underpinning shall consist of a permanent continuous masonry foundation. Siding must be a common material. The front, rear, and all other steps and landings must be constructed in accordance with all legal requirements. And all of the zoning requirements of the town must be met. We have the application, the tax map information, and the notice of public hearing. We don't have anybody signed up to speak on this public hearing, but I will officially open the public hearing. And again, no one, so we'll close it. Any discussion or questions on the special use at 8 Frye Lane?
I just have a quick question, and maybe, I don't know, I'm just missing a picture. So the property is owned by Kenneth Frye? Okay. But the trailer will be Rex?
Eugene.
Rex Eugene, okay.
It's a family, the family property.
Any other questions or discussions? Ready for motion?
I would move the planning commission recommend approval to town council of the special use permit to install a manufactured home at 8 Frye Lane, tax map listed in the R3 High Density Residential District as permitted in town code 402.3.E. from Rexford Eugene Frye, compliance with town code section 402.3.E. as presented.
Can we have the roll call please?
Mr. Seaworth?
Yes.
Mr. Sowers?
Yes.
Mr. Good?
Yes.
Ms. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Huffman?
Yes.
Ms. Thamba?
Yes.
Okay, the next public hearing application is for a special use permit to operate a lodging house at 178 Allison Drive. The tax map number is 42A17184. It's in the planned neighborhood zoning district. And we have the definition for lodging house. We have the conditions that are included in town code section 519. Additionally, the guests may not stay more than 14 days. And the special use permit shall not transfer upon the sale of the property or membership interest composition in the holding company. We have the application, tax map information. And it's been properly advertised for the public hearing. Again, on this one, we don't have any one signed up, but I do need to officially open the public hearing and then close it. Advertised and people had a chance to come in and sign up if they wanted to. Any questions or discussion on this application?
I have, I'm late to the party, and I haven't been following this. How many units total are planned for that development?
Townhome in the 200s.
And how many are completed already?
Eighty odd, and then there's another 24 under construction.
Okay. And of the 84 that are already completed, this is our...
This will be the fifth.
Fifth one, okay. I understand that the developer has included in the HOA that it can by special use permit be a short-term rental. So people who are buying these units that don't want to do short-term rentals are made aware that there are people on either side or across or whatever can be doing that. But if there's going to be 200 units and even 15, 20% of them turn out to be special use permits, like, has there been discussion about the impact of that on the town's infrastructure at all?
Not necessarily on the infrastructure. This application and three of the other applications were from owner occupants who have jobs that take them away. And so they're simply looking to be able to add to their income by doing that. Historically, we have not had issues with short-term rentals. That said, we've not had...
A development that's got over 200 units in it.
And, and that they're in very close proximity.
And that they're marketing it for short-term rentals.
So we will, we will be monitoring that.
But we do have one tonight that is not owner occupied, correct? It's being submitted by an LLC?
No, this is an individual who states that he is living on the property.
This one is?
Yes.
Isn't there another one that we looked at last?
Last week, well, last month, we looked at three, two, I believe, were owner occupied. And one was, was out of Northern Virginia, yes.
Right, right, okay.
Well, unless the council makes a code change, I don't know.
Right, that's why I was asking if there had been discussion.
I could vote against it until that...
That is correct. And the town attorney has determined that we should simply be monitoring that and at such time that the planning commission would recommend and council would agree that any zoning district should not have any more short-term rentals in that area. It would have to simply be a deletion of that from our code for that zoning district.
So what types of things would constitute a reason to do that for the council? What, like, what kinds of things would they be looking for in order to make that change?
Well, again, if, right now, what they have asked is that every year, as part of the annual report from the planning commission, we will include in there a list of all of the special use permits for short-term rentals in all the various zoning districts. Their main, the main review right now is just to see the total number. If for any reason we start to experience increased calls from our police department for noise or other issues in any given district, that would be another, that would be another issue to, to present to the planning commission and council. And the, our chief is very good about letting us know when problems are developed.
I'm sure he is. And so that, when they asked for that, that inclusion of that information into the annual report, they, have they asked for the revenue associated with those short-term rentals as well as part of the report?
No. Right now, they're simply trying to gauge, a lot of the, the, the public comment has been a concern about impact on the availability of either long-term rental or just single-family homes that would be owner occupied. And so the, the best way to monitor that has been to simply keep an eye on how many special use permits are issued in each of the districts so that we can see if, if there is any district that is starting to have too many.
But nobody really has talked about what too many would be?
Correct.
Okay, I understand.
That's, and, and it is just a, basically a feeling of, well, maybe there is too many here now. So, yes, the, 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 the direction from council is give us the information. And, and the planning commission will also have it. And, and at that time, we'll just continue to monitor it and see if, if there's anything. And again, as we go through the year, we can just keep an idea. If we start seeing a significant increase in the applications in any given area, that might be enough for the planning commission to say, okay, well, can you let us know? How many have we had in this area or that area? And then we can report that to council if it becomes a concern of the planning commission that, hey, you know, is 10% here in, in this neighborhood too many? Is 20% too, too many?
So, to your point, Johnny, and I, and again, I'm sorry if I'm taking up too much time, but I'm really trying to understand the process. So, as long, what I'm hearing you say is that as long as the council has allowed it by special use permit in the code, we don't have, this body does not have any discretion over which, as long as they are submitted correctly and everything is followed according to code, we, we don't have any discretion over whether it's approved or denied?
Oh, absolutely not. If, if there is any, any concern on the part of the planning commission that either comments from the, the public or concerns that you have, you have the ability to issue a recommendation of denial.
Okay.
Yeah, please, please don't, yeah, so yes, if there is something that is a concern of, of the planning commission, by all means, that is, the, the role of the planning commission is to alert the town council of, from a planning perspective, these are our concerns, and we don't recommend going forward with any given application.
Because of the way, the way this process seems to be working is that this body would, should become aware of concerns from other citizens before the town council.
Absolutely.
Unless people go out of order, which in my previous job happened all the time. So, if, if we had concerns that were brought to us, we could put on the brakes and, and get, either get more information or make a different recommendation to the council.
Absolutely. Historically, the planning commission hasn't always had a unanimous vote of either recommendation or denial.
Okay.
So yes, by all means, that is the role of the planning commission is to focus more on the town code and proper planning guidelines so that you are looking to how the town develops. When it elevates to, to a council level, they will definitely take it into consideration, but then they also get into the more of the, the political questions. So that's, and that's where the planning commission is in a, in a, in a role of not necessarily looking at the bigger political issue.
Right.
It's just to focus on what makes sense according to the comprehensive plan, the town code, and any citizen input that you might receive.
Okay, thank you, thanks for...
Could we maybe, because it does seem like it has been, it is in the process of increasing more rapidly as far as requests over what we've seen historically over the last several years, can we get like, either like a quarterly running tally? Or a, like, the last 12, 12-month history or something of what's happened? You know, because obviously, we probably don't need to analyze it every month, but maybe at the end of June, the end of Sep- September, whatever, we'd look and say, oh gee, there's been one this quarter, there's been 17 this quarter.
Right, and that's what happened to me. I was, I was out there for the job fair at Laurel Ridge, and then I went back, I was back out there the other night, and I was like, oh, oh, okay. And I did a little quick math, and I was like, hmm. So if we continue to get the special use requests at the same rate that we've been getting them at that completion build-out, that's, that's, that's significant.
Well, it was significant even when we saw the annual report this, for this past year and how many we had presented to us in the past year compared to the, the last three years. And, I mean, we surpassed what we did two months earlier, three years.
I don't know what you've had for other things.
Well, parking sometimes could become an issue. And I would assume they've got that worked out out there, that every house gets two cars or something, I don't know.
Yeah, but then they have that parking lot that's off to the, the side, right?
They've got that covered.
On the idea of too many, won't, won't the, won't the market at some point take care of that? Just like with, with any other business, if there's too many fast-food places or too many of this or too many of that, it seems to me at some point, if there are too many short-term rentals in town or too many cabins down the river, too many out along the ridges or in Stanley or Shenandoah, at some point, somebody's property is not going to be rented. And they may go back and sell it or a long-term rental. I think the market's going to take care of it.
I think it will too, I agree with you. My, my concern is, is that the market won't respond quickly enough to, to mitigate the impact, the negative impact that it could have on the citizens here.
But unless, unless we have people objecting to these permits or increased police calls or things like that, which very rarely happen, then I, I think that the market process will take care of it.
I kind of agree with Ronnie. You know, I don't think it's an arbitrary number is the way this is going to happen. It's going to have to be feedback from the people that live there or problems with law enforcement or something.
No, I, I wasn't even suggesting, I don't deal in arbitrary numbers, for sure. I was just wondering what the criteria is, like, what has to happen for questions to be asked? Like, what determines somebody saying, oh, is it a concern from the, you know, is it too many police? Like, what, what kinds of things does council look at to make those decisions? I, that was just, I'm trying to figure out the process.
And every application is different, and that, that was part of the reason that the special use permit was put in. Just because I think that this use in my house here is a good fit. It may not be a good fit in a different location. And that's why all of these come to y'all as a, on a case-by-case basis.
That helps me, thank you.
Well, and it's never really happened before, right? So we're, it's going to be new territory for all of us to figure it out as we go, I think.
If, if it makes anyone feel any better, we haven't had an application for special use permit for your next meeting.
Thanks, Steve.
I feel like you shouldn't have put that out in the first place.
As I mentioned one other time, in some cities in Virginia, when that law was introduced this year that would allow realtors to start doing that, hotels that, you know, million, multimillion-dollar hotels were complaining about it was taking their business away. And they were, you know, solid foundations in communities. And that's one of the things that got that bill defeated because Hilton was wild about it, and some of the places that they had, a lot of hotels, marry on. But we don't have that problem here.
No, we don't.
Okay, other discussion on this special use permit, 23 this 11.
I move that the planning commission recommend approval to the town council of the special use permit to operate a lodging house at 178 Allison Lane, tax map 42A17-1-84 in the planned neighborhood development zoning district from Wonokahavi Wahesi with the conditions as presented.
Very nicely done.
He practiced it. Oh, second, I'll second.
Um, can we have the roll call please?
Ms. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Huffman?
Yes.
Ms. Thamba?
Yes.
Mr. Seaworth?
Yes.
Mr. Sowers?
Yes.
And Mr. Good?
Yes.
Retirement get you, huh?
Yes.
I'm sure retirement.
Okay. Okay, we have some items for updates and discussions. First one being code amendment in chapter 516. We're asked to discuss the town code related to accessory dwelling units, town code appendix A zoning, article 5, in chapter 516. These accessory dwelling units in the proposed code would be by a special use permit in the business R1, R2, R3, and R4. And we have a copy of the proposed change to the code.
Also at your seats, there's been some information that's come in relatively recently. The first was an email message from Kelly Butler with Page County alluring the town to the fact that the Virginia Building Residential Code defines accessory dwelling units as a dwelling unit in a two-family dwelling that is an accessory to the primary unit. And then I did reach out to another, other, other communities. They are maintaining the accessory dwelling unit as the title for both an attached or a detached structure. However, if the planning commission wanted, we can rename it to, and there's a number of different things, an accessory dwelling structure, an accessory detached dwelling unit. So there's, the, the, the first item is if, if the planning commission is comfortable with the continuation of the question, accessory dwelling unit. It does appear that most, all of the other localities are maintaining it and have not had any conflict with, between the building code and the, their zoning code because the zoning is more specific to the use, not necessarily to any of those. But just wanted to bring that to the planning commission's attention that if you thought it was warranted, we can consider an alternative name for these structures since it is, as, as we're developing it primarily to focus on detached structures. The other thing that comes up from that is that we were, I was in correspondence with the city of Fredericksburg's planning director, and they forwarded a nice comparison of a number of localities because they are in the process of updating their code. And one of the things that they're coming to grips with is that they are considering accessory dwelling unit not only being a detached structure, but if you wanted to convert a basement, then you could say that there's an external entrance to the basement, and that could also be an attached accessory dwelling unit that more conforms with the Virginia Building Code. Again, throwing that out, didn't know if you all wanted to simply focus on detached structures because that's originally what we were talking about. However, if there is a, a consideration to wanting to have the ability for folks to be able to convert a basement into an accessory dwelling unit, that, that is also something that could be part of our future discussions. And then finally, as, as, as you look through the update from Fredericksburg, some of the items that they were considering, again, was either detached or attached. And then, including that there's only, only one single-family detached allowed on each lot. They also got into, under item 3A, a discussion about not only the size of the structure, but also... They also got into under item three A, a discussion about not only the size of the structure, but also. The amount of the rear yard that a detached structure could include. Uh, their limit, they're proposing a limit of thirty percent of the rear yard, again, just so that the detached structure doesn't become overwhelming. In any given zoning area. They also, under item four, uh, are limiting the height to twenty-five feet, or twelve feet if it's located. Um, in the, the side yard. Uh, again, that's something that we hadn't included in our discussion yet, but if that is something that the planning commission felt was significant. Uh, they, that is another opportunity for y'all to, to have a discussion on that. And then the final thing, under item eleven, is that the accessory dwelling units shall have, uh, an independent address. And I did discuss with, uh, the Page County, they would recommend for nine-one-one purposes, that if we do proceed with accessory. Uh, dwelling units that are detached, that an independent address be included, so that the responders know not to go to the front building, but to a rear yard. So, anyway, um, there's a, I apologize, there's a lot of information that we wanted to present to y'all tonight. Uh, again, so the, the, the expectation would be that we'll probably continue this discussion to the next meeting. But there are a number of other items that are probably worth discussing.
So, so remind me, cause I know we reviewed it last month, but that was a whole month ago. Um, what is bringing this to our attention? What, what's prompting?
Well, as part of council's discussion about the availability of housing stock in the town. We currently only allow accessory dwelling units to be considered for buildings that were constructed. Prior to two thousand eight. Um, in only a very limited, uh, zoning distance. So what is being, what, what council has sent to the planning commission will, would allow, um. Would, would allow newer structures to be included, uh, in the ADU consideration. It expands the zoning districts that they can be considered, uh, for use in. And, uh, it also, one of the requirements that is up in the code currently. Any ADU has to have independent water and sewer to that structure, which adds an additional ten to fifteen thousand dollars, just for the facility fees. Let alone having to run the independent piping to the building.
If it's a detached ADU.
So there's, and, and currently we don't allow any attached ADUs, the, the code is very specific that if you have a basement, it is only for the house, it can't be. Used as a, an independent living space. So, there's, there's a, uh, so what, what council's desire was, was to revisit the ADUs. And see if there is the ability to allow for an expansion of long-term, either rental or. Home use, uh, for, uh, if, if you have, uh, children or parents that, that are looking to come live with you, so that you have the ability to further. Expand the housing stock within town.
Thank you.
And I apologize, I threw a lot at y'all fairly quickly. Um, if you have any questions, by all means, please let me know, and if you wanna talk about anything tonight, you can definitely do that, or if you want time to digest it, we will, we can definitely talk to Jim.
So if, if we consider the ones that are like a basement, um, like in our house when it was built in nineteen ninety-three. There's a stub there for a bathroom in the basement. So if that would be included, then it could potentially be another dwelling unit in the basement.
Yes, sir.
If, if all the requirements are met and everything.
So. With the attached-detached conversation. Currently, without this change. If somebody had parents that couldn't live alone anymore. And they wanted to put an addition on their house.
That can be.
With an outside entrance, but connected. That, that is currently allowed?
Additions to homes that meet the, the, the building code, yes, though, that is, that is allowed.
And would that addition also be allowed to, to rent that addition?
No.
That's not currently allowed.
Correct, under the current code, a single-family home is defined as only a single family. And, uh, can you, do we go in and say, no, grandpa, I can't live here? No, that's, that, and we, we try to have a very inclusive family designation. But.
So with the change, if the change happens, then that would be allowed with an addition, or would it?
With a special use permit, it could be, if, if, if the code were amended to include both attached or detached.
It's still not short-term.
But still.
Still not short-term, correct.
And, and, and as you go through the list of all of the other localities, uh, it appears that most every other locality is, is desirous to have only housing stock, not short-term rentals. Be permitted in the, these ADUs.
So the thing I keep coming back to in my head, because I have friends who are travel nurses. They're usually six weeks, so that they can't do short-term rentals, because it's longer than fourteen days. So would this help a travel nurse, if they were coming to work at our hospital? Or could it potentially help a person like that?
Because. And, and, and we've had a few folks that have asked this question, short-term rental is, is defined as fourteen days.
Right.
Where do we define long-term? What I tend to tell people, six months, if you do a six-month lease, it absolutely is a long-term. Three months? Yes. Between fourteen days and three months? It's difficult, you know, if you're looking at a sixty to ninety-day, uh, rental. Yeah, I don't, I, legally, if it's beyond fourteen days, I have to consider it long-term. But, that is something that we could get into, and I hate to throw more into the weeds, but where, if, if we're looking at this, do we want to define? You know, the longer-term rental specifically for the special use permit to be sixty days, ninety days at a minimum. Then, and again, because it is a special use permit to allow for an ADU, it does give the planning commission and the, the council the flexibility of considering. How do you want this to, to be implemented? And if we want to set a minimum base for rental, that is something that can be included as part of the, either in the code, or as a condition of the special use permit.
I like the detached only, as most people, as you say, seem to do.
It just seems like it's less opportunity for problems to develop.
Well, then, then we should probably call it an accessory dwelling structure.
Or, or, or define at the very top, that accessory dwelling unit in this code is defined as a detached structure.
Yeah, well, in Fredericksburg, you know, they, they did, they said, single-family detached dwellings.
Well, they still refer to them as A-ADUs, but yes, they, they get a little more specific, and, and again, that's. From the, the Page County building official would, would prefer if we adopted something other than simple, simply an ADU, because then it, it differentiates from the building code. And there's never a question of, you know, what are we talking about?
They don't have to dig to see the difference.
Yep, so if, again, the accessory dwelling structure might be a, uh, it would be a differentiation between the unit.
So this will be an ongoing discussion?
Until the planning commission is comfortable with making a recommendation of a final version. And, and, and what, what, what I would, I would ask is, if you guys have preferences on, on where we go, um. I'll keep drafting different things, and then we can see how y'all wanna proceed with that, so. And I do apologize, I got some of this stuff leaked from, uh, Fredericksburg, so I wasn't able to include it in your packets, but. What, what I intend to do is to take some of what, uh, I've seen from Fredericksburg and, and the county, and we'll come up with a, uh, another version of chapter five sixteen for your next meeting. And then, by all means, there's, if, if you guys have things that you want included, please let me know, and we'll, we'll draft it in there, and then that way y'all can go through and, and figure out what you wanna keep and what you wanna change.
And we did say they would have a special address.
Well, that, that's up to y'all, but the, 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 it would, it would be of great assistance to.
I think, I think it should be.
It should be posted.
I think that's a great point.
Put like A or B?
No, county doesn't like A or B. They, they, they like specific numbers. And it, 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 well.
Like minus nine, so, so the accessory dwelling could be nine and a half?
Yeah.
Nine point five?
Plus tens beside you.
There's a ten beside me.
Well, the county's been known to renumber for nine-one-one. They've renumbered before.
Well, and, and there are some locations in town where unfortunately, we would probably have to just not assign a number, because there, there's nine and eleven that are right next to each other, so there's no number to do there. But, when it's available, um, it, 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 it is strongly recommended that we include the, a separate address for a detached structure that is happening.
I think it's a great idea. What number do you use?
Especially on bigger parcels of property, I mean, it could be a pretty good distance between, between those structures.
It could be a like-for-death situation.
Sure, absolutely.
Yeah, I had to get mine changed, like, on thirteen Jordan, right, my mailbox sits on me. So they said, well, that's gonna be thirteen Jordan, so they had to change it, because every time they come, everybody like, where your house at? Where your house at? The front of the house is on Jordan, but the mailbox is there, so they thinking, there's no house here. So it took a long time, so they had to change it, had the post officers and everything to get it right. I was praying, and the house been there for you ever.
Well, again, um, you know, as we go forward, if there's any, 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 anything else that y'all have, have observed, or any other concerns, please let me know, we'll try and incorporate that into the, the draft for your review, and Jim.
Other discussion at this time? Okay, we have another item for discussion. The Boomfield pedestrian connector trails project.
Well, Ms. Stombach picked up on this before the meeting. Uh, as, as, the, the next item is the CIP, and if you compare the numbers that we had included in the, the CIP versus what VDOT came up with, there's a significant disparity. Um, what, what happened, we've been, Brian Christman has taken the, the lead with this project. Uh, and he, uh, has been working to develop concepts, and, and took them to VDOT in an application of. Trying to secure VDOT funding for this project. We've been estimating the, the sidewalk along Luray Avenue and down Sixth to Dean, to be in the three-quarter of a million-dollar range. Unfortunately, uh, when you, when we, we take it to the next level, uh, the V, VDOT views it as a two-and-a-half million-dollar project. With nearly seven hundred thousand dollars in engineering design, we've budgeted twenty-five, and we believe that's a fair number to put together the plans for this project.
Because, because basically, it's a straight line.
Because it's a straight line, because we have, we have surveyed the, the right-of-way, um, and it is relatively flat out there, so there's not a lot of grade, there's not a lot of. Design issues that, that were, were, in addition, they've identified a quarter of a million dollars for right-of-way and utility relocations. Um, again, there's, I think we know of two water meters that we would have to move from the proposed location of where the trail would be going. So. What was presented to town council was that if we proceed going through with, with VDOT funding, the, the, the cost of the project is not feasible in our minds. So what we are, we've recommended to, to council, and they have approved, uh, we have funding in next year's budget for the design of this project. We will proceed with the design in next year's budget, and then subsequent to that, we will include in future, uh, budgets. Either funding for a quarter to a third of the trail, and then build it in different phases. So what, what has come out of this, we thought we would be able to get a, a relatively limited cost to the town project. Uh, however, going through with the state funding, there would be a twenty percent match, so if we went with them, we would be paying a half a million dollars. If we don't go with them, we think we'll be paying three-quarters of a million dollars, uh, and it will be a significantly simpler project. So that's the route that we are proceeding with. And so what the update was, originally, we thought we'd be coming back and saying, array, you know, VDOT project, life is wonderful.
I think Brian said it wasn't worth the paper it was written on, is what he said Monday night.
We were very surprised by what came out of, uh, this, this effort. So anyway, uh, the update to the project is that we are continuing with it, we will be doing the design next year. And then we will be building this in the next three to four years, subsequent to that. Uh, and we'll be starting at First Street, and then just progressing down Luray, and then down Sixth Street, so that hopefully within five years, we will have a nice walkway to, to the park. There's two other components to this project in the Boomfield, one is to have a sidewalk that goes all the way up Third Street, uh, from, from Luray Avenue. And then a, a spur off of Third on Ninth, so that we kind of have a good walkway network. Uh, we'll be proceeding with the Third Street when we get done with Luray Avenue, so. This will probably be a ten-to-twelve-year complete build-out of, of sidewalks. One of the things that, uh, one of the questions that Ms. Stombach had was, do we need to adjust the CIP? Because the original number was a nine-hundred thousand dollar number three years from now. We will be updating the CIP next, for the, the next fiscal year, so we're asking the planning commission to go ahead and adopt the, uh, CIP with this project. With numbers that will have to be spread out over a number of future years. We will accommodate, we will accomplish that in, in your future CIP. Uh, one of the things that we have to do is have an adopted CIP that has a project, so that if VDOT funding is available, we can say, yes, this is a project that is within our, our five-year. Comprehensive, comprehensive improvement plan, and it does meet the qualifications for state funding, so.
And that's what we did ahead, the two-eleven, or.
The rear yard. So, uh, any questions about where we're going with the, the, the trail along Luray Avenue?
That leads us right into the.
Yes, sir.
It's a great project, I know. A lot of people that have wanted that for a long time.
Yes, ma'am, it is definitely a needed project.
It is very needed.
And didn't Brian say he knocked on everybody's door, I mean, he, he.
We sent letters to all of the affected property owners. We sent letters to all of the affected property owners, we only heard from a handful. But the good news is it's not only just a continuation of the trail to the park, it also will ultimately be a pedestrian network within the Boomfield, so.
Right, because there's a lot of kids that walk to those schools, and there's no sidewalks.
Yes.
Okay, if we're ready, then we can look at the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four capital improvement program. Do we want to look at this item by item?
That's up to the commission. We can, if you'd like. First project that's identified is the update of the street lighting along East Main Street. We've gone through and updated all of the streetlights to LED. However, along East Main Street, we have some failing, not failing, but electric service lines that do need to be replaced. They are all underground, and we've been doing some piecemeal repairs, but that is a major capital project that we're hoping to do within the next few years. Again, the Boomfield Trail project, again, that'll be a multi-year project following our discussion with VDOT. Replacing the East Main Street Bridge over dry run. Again, we're working towards giving funding for that. We've got the multi-year upgrades to our sidewalks to improve ADA compliance with all of those projects, and that's an annual project. If you have questions or receive questions about where we're looking to go in the upcoming years, that is available on the council website. And each year, we update what we've accomplished and what will be the next year's priorities. Replacing the raw water and finished water pumps at the water plant, that is actually an active project. We have received some of the pumps, actually, I think we've received all of the pumps. We're simply waiting on the contractor availability to replace them. The water meter upgrade project, we are, we've actually received about twelve hundred, I believe, water meters. We have to get all to twenty-four hundred of the water meters, so the contractor will come in and then once else, we'll replace all of them so that they can be radio read. What that means is that we'll have a truck that will be able to drive throughout the community, pick up the readings from those water meters, and then report back to the, to our offices what everybody's usage is. So we are working towards that, and that is ARPA-funded. And then, replacing any and all of the necessary sanitary sewer lines that are contributing to our RNI problem. That will be a long-term annual project where we try and go through and identify the problem, the higher problem areas. We now have video inspection equipment, so our public works department can get out, take a look, assess if there's trees that are growing into the sewer lines, if there's lines that have become disconnected, or if there's manholes that have issues. There's a number of means that contribute water into our sanitary sewer system, so we'll be forevermore trying to fix them. And then the final thing is improving some of the flood control equipment at Lake Arrowhead and Lake Mooring Stone.
The ARPA money is by reimbursement, right?
The ARPA money has already been awarded to the town, and we, the council has simply authorized five-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. In June, we will be, the council will be authorizing a loan of seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. The total project cost is one-point-two-million dollars. So we'll be using ARPA for part of it and doing a long-term loan for the remaining.
So they've sent the funds ahead of the project, and you don't have to do that by reimbursement?
No, well, no, ARPA funds were money from the federal government.
Right.
And yes, they've already been received by the town.
Oh, okay.
However, every year, we have to submit to the state, who then submits to the feds that says.
How you spent it.
How we spent it, and that we are spending it correctly, because there is criteria.
Well, there's a by-wind date too, right? What's the?
We have to have it all authored.
Encumbered?
Encumbered by, I believe it's twenty twenty, end of this year, I'm sorry, end of two thousand twenty-four. And it has to all be spent by the end of two thousand twenty-six.
The school year, not calendar year.
Calendar year.
Calendar year.
Okay, other questions or discussion?
The only thing in here that wasn't on our comp plan was the water treatment, is that correct?
Correct. And again, because we're already in the process of that.
Okay, are we ready to move on this?
I move the planning commission recommend the FY two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four capital improvement program to the town council for their adoption of the FY two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four budget.
Second. Can we have the roll call, please?
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Huck?
Yes.
Ms. Tomback?
Yes.
Mr. Seaworth?
Yes.
Mr. Sowers?
Yes.
Mr. Good?
Yes.
And Ms. Dixon?
Yes.
Okay, are there other items that we need to discuss? Looks like our next meeting will be on June the fourteenth. Any other information?
Thankfully, most all of our major road projects are completed and open. And so that's where the focus of the town will be on some of the utilities as well as the Boomfield sidewalk projects.
What's going on out at the singing tower? There's a big.
Fixing the lights?
Well, there's two things. The electric fee to the singing tower had to be replaced, and that is being done by the Luray Park Association, but the town council did provide them funding for that. The other project out there is the installation of a couple of cameras for the police department to monitor the traffic through the roundabout. So there's a few things, those are the two that I'm aware of that are ongoing right now.
I see something's missing out there at Walmart.
We had some success.
Yeah.
Not everything yet, but, you know, we're getting there. They were responsive, thankfully.
I didn't even notice, the big sign is gone?
Big sign's gone.
I hadn't paid attention.
It's a big blank space. Yeah, the frame, the frame.
Oh, the frame's still there.
The frame is still there, but the sign is gone, so we'll take our small pieces.
Okay, other, anything else? Okay, we've completed our agenda as amended, and we're adjourned.